I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for January 23rd, 2017 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jackson, here. Dr. Davidson, here.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Bates.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Paskett. Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Seven present, we have four.
Thank you, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes from December 12th, 2016, and January 9th, 2017?
So moved.
Seconds.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Davidson, here.
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Thank you. Tonight's community contribution, yeah, tonight's community contribution award this evening goes to Northwoods Community Church. On December 20th, 50 Roosevelt Magnet School students attended the Christmas show at Northwoods and also were provided dinner before the show. The entire administrative team, Ms. Clark, Ms. Smothers, and Mr. Morrison assisted in supervising, but also were able to enjoy the evening with the children, with the kids. This is one of the first, but almost an amazing opportunity for Roosevelt students. As part of a new adoptive school partnership, Northwoods is also volunteering and tutoring at Roosevelt, providing supplies to students and also staff support. Here to tell us a little bit more about Northwoods' work in the district and the community is Ms. Lynn Johnson. Lynn Johnson, is she here? Oh, she is. I say he. Sorry.
Good evening. On behalf of Northwoods Church, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to partner with Roosevelt Magnet School. Such a wonderful opportunity and I look forward to serving with Roosevelt and bringing forth volunteers to serve with Roosevelt for reading buddies and in different ways. The Christmas production was an amazing way to kick off our relationship with Roosevelt and I'll always remember the tour that I had of Roosevelt School with Cindy Clark. Those children just really touched my heart and I'll always remember that. I just want to thank you as the board and as teachers for your dedication to the students. The students are our future and you're a great part of that, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, Mr. Principal Clark, would you have anything to say today?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Johnson and her husband and Northwoods Community Church for allowing our students the opportunity. Plus, she failed to mention that the week she came by, she noticed that several of our children did not have coats and within 10 days, they had delivered 88 coats.
And our student council went through and our teachers gave us the names of the students
that may be in need of coats and they were given, that was the very cold week if you remember that far back. But we're looking forward to every opportunity from our community, anybody sitting out here would like to help Roosevelt in addition, but Northwoods has done an outstanding job for us.
Thank you, are there other members of Northwoods here?
No.
Not this evening.
Not this evening? All right, on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation for Northwoods Community Church and all the work that you do and we thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Mrs. Clark actually invited me to the performance in December and I did attend it and was very pleased and I know some of our kids, I know there was a kid from Northwood, I mean Northmore that did a really nice job, so on behalf of the board and our staff, just wanted to thank you for your commitment as a church to continue to partner with the school district. So, thank you, Roosevelt is a great school and Ms. Clark and her team, they're doing an amazing job. So, thank you for that collaboration, it's needed and we thank you and encourage continued partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are awards and recognitions. Our student board member, Ms. Bates, will recognize some students. Is she going to go up here? And those students that are being recognized are the top 10 accelerated readers, primary and middle school students. Ms. Bates?
Tonight, our student recognition, recognitions highlight accomplishments in reading and perseverance. As a student board member, I am pleased to announce the names of these students and their accomplishments and showcase what a remarkable example they are setting for their peers. Academic instructional officer, Dr. Jerry Bell, and superintendent Karat will assist in presentation of a special certificate and recognition medal. Reading is like nearly everything else in life, the more you do it, the better you get and the more fun it becomes. Peoria Public Schools competed to see which school's students could read the most accelerated reader-approved books during winter break. Students then took accelerated reader tests the week of January 9th. Tonight, we will recognize the top 10 readers from the Peoria school level, grades K through 4th, and the top 10 from the middle school level, grades 5th through 8th. We are also proud to announce the winning schools are Whittier Primary and Mark Bills Middle School. Individually, the top district readers by school are, in first place, Catherine Kamisaki from Keller. Lamar Johnson from Mark Bills. Our second top reader is Elizabeth Wayland from Keller. We also have Marcus Winters from Lindbergh. In third place, we have Kevin Leo from Keller. And we have Grace Hobelmann from Lindbergh. In first place, in fourth place, I'm sorry, we have Katsumi Ingol from Whittier. And we have Eliza Hedman from Rolling Acres. Going for fifth place, we have Isabel Lynn from Whittier. And we have Angelica Rodriguez from Rolling Acres. In sixth place, we have Elijah Barksdale from Heinz. And we have Desiree Simpson from Lindbergh. Seventh place, we have Crew Harden from Keller. And we have Mia Doty from Lindbergh. Eighth place, we have Liam Ray from Northmore. And Charity Leflex from Lindbergh. Next, we have Agreenie Nekwa from Charter Oak. And Aleah Galindo from Mark Bills. Next, we have Evan, Evangeline Hedman from Northmore. And Sayana Bryant from Mark Bills. Last but not least, we have Marco Bueno from Mark Bills. Again, I would like to congratulate all students on your awards and I would like to recognize the parents, teachers, and administrators at this time, please stand so we can give you a round of applause.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows, we're going to take the kids out here and we've got more books for them. So, for reading, you get more books, so congratulations. We have a few other things in the bag as well, a journal for them to journal about their writing and so forth, and we'll give the certificates to the kids, but I did see that there was, I believe, Robin Wright here from Mark Bills who had the most points for the middle school, and Denise Fritsch from Whittier, I didn't know if they wanted to come up and talk about how you encourage this reading over the winter break.
That's a good idea. Then we'll take the kids to the media room and have a picture.
Do you want to have them walk down that way and up that way?
Walk down, okay. Awesome.
So, why don't you lead the way and let them follow you.
We're proud of you kids, keep reading, okay?
So, this is Robin White from Mark Bills Middle School?
We have an awesome bunch of readers at Mark Bills. I've been, it's remarkable how you look at middle school and you see where, if you look at middle school and adolescent reading, you see boys generally drop off. That's never been the case at Mark Bills. Our boys are really, really rocking the reading. And one of the ways that we set goals, individualize goals, each student, I talk to each and every student, we individualize goals based on their ability. So, everybody can make their goal, they go into drawings for prizes at the end of each quarter if they make their goal. We have really grown into a culture of reading at Mark Bills, we have reading in our schedule, the teachers embrace it, I have the opportunity to buy books and having books in kids' hands, that's 90% of it. But we have a real culture, a feeling of making your goal, setting your goal, making your goal, and I couldn't be more proud of these guys and what they do, so, thank you.
And this is Denise Fritsch, the interventionist from Whittier, before I let her say a little bit, one thing I did notice about both winning schools were, some of the other schools got a lot of points because they might have had a handful of kids who are just really enthusiastic about reading, but for some reason, these two schools must have done something that was evident that almost all the kids read, maybe some read a lot, but everybody at least read a little and that's why their school's probably won, so, Denise Fritsch.
Good evening and thank you. At Whittier, AR has always been a focus point for us. If I am not 100% positive, but as long as I've been working for Peoria Public Schools, I believe this is year 14 or 15 for me, Whittier has always focused on accelerated reader. It is a way for our students to get excited about reading, even down to our kindergartners, they are reading and taking AR tests now, they might not be at the very first day of school, but they are taking AR tests and reading. So, our kids get excited about AR, they set their own individualized goal, they work towards meeting those goals, we do have rewards for them available outside of this district initiative, but for this initiative, we got the email, the interventionists got the email and information, I immediately sent it out to the teachers and said, hey, let's do this, our goal is to place this year, we want to get in first, second, or third place. Teachers immediately jumped on board, we shared the information with the students prior to winter break and gave the challenge out. Our two students here that got fourth and fifth place in primary school were really gung-ho, super excited, we had several other students who were close to that top 10, but it was really exciting for our school to have a place this year in AR. Our students got on board, our parents got on board, and then teachers. One way we also encouraged that was during that first week back to school, we did what's called Dear Time, Drop Everything and Read, each classroom did that for about 15 to 20 minutes each day, along with our PBIS initiatives to get the kids back into the swing of school and academics. So, I want to just thank our parent, our students, our parents, and our teachers and hopefully the district, Peoria Public Schools continues to do challenges like this so that all of our schools can become more involved with the accelerated reader program, so thank you.
Next, I would like to, congratulations again to the readers. We are also pleased to recognize tonight, Richwoods High School students who are members of the MAAP organization, Minority Academic Advanced Project, which is 100% student-led and all-inclusive. The executive board has presented to the RHS parents at the back-to-school night, has set up presentations at back-to-school night and freshman orientation, and they continue to reach out to students, community, and parents for their mission of providing more academic opportunities of all minorities in education. They are currently leading and will run the school-wide Black History Month celebration at RHS next month. They are extremely organized in our leaders at their school. They have handled criticism and have stayed professional to create a positive and all-inclusive Black History Month celebration at Peoria High, I'm sorry, at Richwoods High School. The standard of excellence. They are Maya Jenkins, Raven Moore, which is the vice president, Kami Mitchell, who is president, Darian Bachman, vice president, Maddie Morrow, Adarius Blake, Celeste Thompson, Caleb Butler, Carter Bell, Jessica Lawler, Brooke Galindo. Congratulations to these students.
We'd like to thank the board first of all, but also the AIOs and Chris Copeland for making this happen tonight, we know you had a full agenda, as you can tell, but if you don't find time to continue to recognize students, what are we here for? So, this group of young men and women behind me, they stand for student leadership. They're not only leaders in the classroom, but these students, of course, they have jobs, they're going to some of the top universities in the country, not to mention Mr. Carter Bell, who's been recently accepted to Harvard University. Just, just to point that out, so. A group a lot smarter than I am, but I do know one thing, they are incredible leaders. They came to me early November as a new principal and they explained their group and what impressed me the most is they said, you know what, we're an all-inclusive group, no matter race, ethnicity, economic status, we want all students here at Richwoods High School to be leaders and involved, and we would like to take on the challenge of truly leading the Black History Celebration at Richwoods High School. They didn't just say they wanted to lead it, they came in with the plan, they sat down, they informed me, they not only have a large group, this is just a few of them, they have an executive board, they have a operational chart, they have weekly meetings, they even have virtual meetings, they have mass texts where they're making decisions late into the night. When they've been challenged, they came together as a united group, they stuck to their mission of being a fully inclusive group, we are so proud of them. We're looking forward to an outstanding celebration for the entire high school, they are the outstanding leaders and I'd like to ask either Kami or Raven or both of the ladies, the president and vice president, just to say a few words.
Hi. Um, wasn't really prepared for this, but um, I would just like to thank, obviously, Peoria Public Schools for awarding us, we really appreciate it. As Mr. Elliot said, we definitely have put in a lot of hard work and effort to make sure that MAP is an all-inclusive organization, and really excited for everything that we have to come, so thanks.
Thank you very much, are any of your parents here tonight? Would you please stand?
All parents of the students and the principal, please stand so we can recognize you at this time.
Announcements, are there any announcements?
I have none. I have two.
Ms. Jackson?
The Peoria Alignment, Governance, and Operating Boards met for official training last week. Executive Director Catherine, Catherine Coyle and the boards continue building on their work to strengthen support for Peoria Public Schools students throughout the community. We are excited to have alignment teams begin projects to help our district and schools build on their success. Math Counts, middle school math students completed two weeks in January. On January 14th, the Illinois Math Academy Math Bowl was held at Carver Center. The Peoria Public School District was represented by teams from Washington Gifted School, Lincoln K through 8, Mark Bills, Rolling Acre, and Von Steuben. This past Saturday, math teams met again at the annual district math counts competition hosted by Lindbergh Middle School. We are honoring the winners, winning students at the next board member, so, meeting, so be sure and be here and congratulate our students, but we want to quickly recognize the winning teams. First place, Rolling Acres. Second place, Lindbergh. Third place, Sterling. And fourth place, Von Student. Congratulations to our outstanding math students and their coaches. Give the coaches a hand.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, other announcements? Mr. Walker?
Sure. Course registration, 300 parents and students attended Parent University last week at Illinois Central College North Campus to learn about the Peoria Public Schools' high school curriculum, 16 career pathways, and early college opportunities. This week's high school curriculum fairs are another great opportunity to learn about these programs and get a deeper understanding of opportunities at each high school. Curriculum fairs will be held from 4:30 to 6:30 at Peoria High School on Tuesday, January 24th, Richwoods High School on Wednesday, January 25th, and Manuel Academy on Thursday, January 26th. Parents and students can meet administrators, counselors, and teachers in tour buildings. Athletic coaches and extracurricular activities, staff advisors will be available. Representatives for Woodruff Career and Technical Center Program, which are open to juniors and seniors from all three high schools, will also be available at each curriculum fair. Online registration for current district students is open in Skyward Student Access. And just another reminder of the cafe, the Warrior Way Cafe at Woodruff Career and Technical Center served 110 lunches on its first Thursday opened to the public last week. This week's menu includes chicken fried steak with mashed potatoes and braised greens. Reservations are due by noon on Tuesday for a complete menu, visit the WCTC webpage or the Peoria Public Schools Facebook page.
Thank you.
Chicken fried steak. Briefly, congratulations again to all our readers and the Richwoods MAAP executive board, the thought occurred to me that the reason our Richwood leaders are leaders is because they read so well. Foundation news. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation's second annual 365 breakfast on January 12th generated over $25,000 and 110 new donors. The annual breakfast brings together Peoria Public Schools administrators, Board of Education members, community leaders, foundation board members, and supporters for an update on foundation activities and accomplishments. On Thursday, February 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., the Peoria Public Schools Foundation will host its third annual uniform fundraising event. This adult-only event held at the Tavern on Prospect in Junction City is $15 per person. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation provides uniforms and cold-weather gear for over 1,000 students each year. For reservations, please visit www.ppsfoundation.org. The application deadline for Peoria Public Schools Foundation scholarships is February 10th, 2017. Reminders were sent over the weekend to high school seniors. Reminders were sent over the weekend to high school seniors and their parents.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Shaw?
Yes, the Five Essentials survey is open until next Monday, January 30th. The Illinois Five Essentials survey provides a comprehensive picture of a school's organizational culture in an individualized report measuring five essentials critical to school's success. That is, effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involve families, supportive environment, and ambitious instruction. 20 years of research at the University of Chicago in more than 400 schools has shown that schools that were strong on at least three of the five essentials were 10 times more likely to make substantial gains in improving student reading and math than schools that were weak on these, or weak on three or more of the essentials. Those differences remain true even after controlling for student and school characteristics, including poverty, race, gender, and neighborhood characteristics. Strength on components within the essentials also correlated with increased teacher retention, student attendance, college enrollment, and high school graduation. Survey is open to parents, teachers, and high school students and only requires 20 minutes or less to complete. Visit www.pureschools.org to link to the survey.
Thank you. Other announcements? Alasia?
Dr. Karat led Illinois Secretary of Education Dr. Susan Purvis and State Senator Chuck Weaver on a tour today of five Peoria Public Schools, Knoxville Center for Student Success, Washington Gifted Middle School, Lincoln K through 8, Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Education Center, and Manuel Academy. A morning conference in the school tours highlighted some of the Peoria Public Schools' innovations and efforts, including the Office of Social/Emotional Learning, Grow Your Own, Equal Opportunity Schools, Credit Recovery, and Competency-Based Learning. Thank you to the school administrators, teachers, staff, and students who took the time today to welcome and visit Dr. Purvis and Senator Weaver and to increase their understanding of the district's achievements.
Thank you. Mr. Adler?
Richwoods High School is celebrating its first annual Winter Fest, an alumni homecoming festival this week. Students and staff are enjoying a week of pep assemblies and grade-level spirit competitions. Alumni are invited and encouraged to join RHS Principal Brett Elliott, we just saw here tonight, at Saturday's varsity home basketball game to honor retired Richwoods athletic coaches, athletic directors, teachers, and administrators.
Thank you. Dr. Karat, you have an announcement?
Manuel High School and Academy Band alumni are invited to jam with the band on Friday. So, this is the alumni band at Manuel Academy. February 10th, when the Manuel Basketball Rams face Normal West. Come visit old friends, rekindle memories, and play under the direction of honorary band director George Graves Jr. His sister is sitting out in the audience. Band alumni should meet in the band room at 6:00 p.m. for a short rehearsal before the game. For more information, visit the Manuel Academy website or the Peoria Public Schools Facebook page.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Thank you. The district presentations are next on the agenda. Do we need to, we have the, okay, thank you. Former Contemporary Program update, Mr. Derek Booth.
This is just an update based on the Contemporary Program that was housed at Woodruff Career Technical Center. Those students were rerouted, and I've asked Mr. Booth to give us an update in terms of where they are and how they're doing. How are the kids doing? Coach Booth?
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. As Dr. Karat said, this is an update from the students that were sent to their home school or other programs within the school district to meet their needs. Throughout the school year, not just for the Contemporary students, but all students are monitored. We do progress monitoring for students. When we talk about progress monitoring, we talk about monitoring their ABCs. And their ABC stands for academics, behavior, and course passage, or, I'm sorry, attendance, behavior, and course passage. So, I'm just going to give you an overview of the data from the students that.
That's a trick to it.
Yeah. So, there was a total of 57 students placed at the closing. You can go ahead. And this is just a list of the schools that receive students and the number of students that they received. Knoxville receiving six, Lincoln one, Lindbergh nine, Manuel High eight, Manuel Middle School two, and you can see the list as it goes down. And we have one student that opted to enroll into a GED program at that time. And this is, starting off with just the grades or the course passage, from Knoxville of those six, at the end of first semester, this is, these are semester averages, all six students were passing all courses. Lincoln, one student was passing nine of 10 courses. Lindbergh, eight students were passing all and one student passing nine of 10. Manuel High School, five students were passing all courses and three students had withdrawn. And you'll see that in a couple of the high schools, and I just wanted to make a note, withdrawn could mean withdrew to a different program, withdrew to out of state. There were some schools, some students that were placed and have withdrew to, like Lincoln's Challenge, Peoria Regional High School. So, withdrawing could mean a number of things, and that's very common with the mobility of Peoria Public Schools. And then Manuel Middle School, one student passing eight of 10 and one student passing seven of 10 courses. Peoria High and Peoria North data combined, three students passing all courses, two students passing six of seven, three students passing five of seven, and five students were failing more than two, and one student withdrawn. In Richwoods, six students passing all courses and three students withdrawn. Rolling Acres, one student passing eight of 10. Sterling, one student passing all courses. And Von Steuben, Von Steuben, two students passing all courses, two students withdrawn, and one student passing all courses at WCTC program. The average daily attendance, just doing the averages of all of these students at their new placement, was eight, you can go ahead and click again, was 85%, which is kind of consistent with our district average. I wanted, as far as behavior, we just looked at students that throughout first semester received five discipline referrals or less, and 40 of the 57 students received five discipline referrals or less. And these were just the ABCs that are monitored. I do want to make a note that on top of the ABCs, which is what our system tracks data for, also their social-emotional learning needs are also being monitored by school administrators and support staff and teachers, and those needs and supports are also being met as well. And then lastly, so in a couple of our high schools, there were students that weren't very successful academically, and several of those students are, have transferred to our Knoxville Center to start second semester, just to start receiving some additional supports and assistance academically. And then again, just the progress of students will continue to be monitored by building staff throughout the year. We just wanted to give you an update. At the time when the Contemporary School closed, we told you we will be, continue to monitor their progress in these areas, but also their social-emotional progress. So, thank you.
And don't forget, these were the kids who were not really functioning well at a regular school. They were placed in a restricted environment, and the goal was to sort of place them back into least restricted environment with lots more support. And as you can see, they're progressing well, and 85% of our district average is actually 92%, but remember, some were not attending at all. So, we're pleased with the progress, for sure. We're very, very, very pleased with the progress, and we'll continue to monitor and provide support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members on this report?
Just one.
Mr. Wether?
Just appreciative that you followed up. I was, a couple of board members are very concerned about these students, and I appreciate that you followed up. I did realize that, I know that the counselors at Richwoods had put together a very special program, and apparently some of the other schools have too, but thank you to keep monitoring them. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No comments? Thank you. Staffing at a glance, Dr. Ikujaku?
President Ross, members of the board, Dr. Karat. Last August, I believe, I think August 22nd, we presented to you the organizational chart, which, as you know, simply shows you the organizational structure without letting you know what the staff count or staff strength is. But today, we're presenting you with the Staffing at a Glance, which will show you what the staff count is. One of the ways that we look at staff count is either by head count or by FTE, which stands for Full-Time Equivalent. Okay, there we go. Start it moving now. And so, we're going to go through this by looking at the district-wide summary, which of course will have the table view, I'm going to go through it, which is also represented by a chart view. And then the three categories with which we look at employees, administrators, teachers, and support staff. And I'll end by going through some of the next steps in staffing and workforce management. I hope you can, those of you back here can see very well, this is the table view. If I could just point your attention to, oh, very good, okay, that works. Take a look at the very bottom here, where it says total of 2043.9. Remember I said there's a difference between head count and full-time equivalent. Our staff, I mean, head count is of course where you're counting everybody who works for the school district, regardless of how much they, how much time they put in. But of course, if you have one job that two people are doing, it's one full-time equivalency by two people doing it. So, the head count will be two, and the full-time equivalency will be one. So, what you're looking at here is the full-time equivalency part. In fact, there's a report that is not here, but if you were to look at head count, you will get about 2,600 people that are working. That would include those who are doing part-time, et cetera. Now, I did mention about the three categories, where we have the administrators, teachers, and support staff. Pay attention to the, the within, this is sort of faint, the within category percentages. As the data shows, the administrative category has 107 altogether. Teachers have 1015, 1,015, full-time equivalent, of course, more if they're doing head count. And then support staff is 921.3. The critical thing to note here is the within category percentages. All right? So, within each category, for example, the administrators, you have the central office certified senior administration, followed by building-level administrators. So, there's 20 central office ones, 55 building-level administrators, at 51.4%. And 30, we also have the administrators that are non-certified, who are basically managers of various departments, and there's 32 of those. So, altogether, of course, there's 107 there. And you can, I guess, you rate for yourself, all the way down, teachers, 1015, as I said, 921, et cetera. When you go to the third column, to the third column, which is as a percent of grand total, which is what outsiders tend to look at when they are evaluating your, how big you are, how small you are. You then see that when you do it as a percent of the total, the certified central administrators were 1% of the total workforce. And of course, that, on down 2.74, building-level administrators, 1.6 for the PTSD. By the way, PTSD means professional and technical support personnel. These are the people who make the trains run on time. So, I just wanted to share this with you. Again, this is going to be quick, because like I said, now here's the chart view of it. It really puts it into perspective, where of course the teachers have the 49.7% of the workforce, and support staff, 45. Administrazione is 5.2 total. Again, this is as a percent of the total. Admin category, the breakout that you just saw, and I know some of you who are back here can't quite see it, but it was a way to make it bigger reward. Teacher category, special education, I mean, regular ed teachers, 68 point, can't quite see from there. What is it? Point seven, okay, very good. Actually, let me follow this here, to help those of us who are back here. And then, special education, yeah, 68.2. Special education, 24%. And of course, the non-classroom folks, those who serve students in non-classroom settings, Support staff, support staff category has only two breakouts, which has 83% of them, or 764, regular education, and 17%, 157, support special education. In terms of next steps, we're continuing to do ongoing updates and data maintenance of the data, continuing to verify job classifications so that they can be accurate for record-keeping purposes, monitor database for extraneous information. Basically, you want to be able to separate things like substitute teacher count from your main count, because that's temporary and that they change on a day-to-day basis, things of that nature. To verify the apportionment of the FTEs, in other words, properly apportion somebody's time across their tax locations. In other words, if somebody is split between three locations, you want to be able to say point 33 here, point 33 here, point 33 here, at the first location, so that each principal in the location will know exactly how much of their time they're getting. And of course, we're going to be digging deeper to develop a lot more demographics for record purposes and for reporting, ethnicity, staff to student, ratios, et cetera. We're also going to be developing at a glance format for school location. In other words, have all the titles listed in one column on the left, and then have each location go into the right to tell you where each position is located. And we're going to do the same thing by grade configuration as well, primary, middle, high school, et cetera. And that's it. I told you it was going to be short. Any questions, folks?
Thank you. That's short.
Questions of Dr. Ikujaku on the presentation? No, seeing none, thank you. Program Budget Committee update? Ms. Eamon?
Yes. And Josh?
Also introduce yourself. Collins is part of that. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carla Eamon, and I'm here with Susan Gersnich and Mick Willis as the co-chairs of the Program Committee. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on transportation. I also have a couple of parents, but I hope we're in the group here that we're going to talk on a specific area, and they'll be helping us out in just a little while. committee, how it's working out of the earlier, that was kind of first semester fiduciary committee work, talk a little bit about the current budget status, and then talk about the revenues and expenditures. And then, we will have our parent group talk a little bit more in-depth about the starting and ending times discussion, and then we'll kind of recap and have our recommendations These are our committee members. As I said, we have the, the chair people at the top, and we have a combination of the academic side, finance, teacher union, and then, of course, we have our subject area expert with us. The purpose of the committee is to achieve the key financial goal, which is to adopt a balanced budget. We want to work, build on the work of the fiduciary committee. That committee was really, really focused on the education fund, and we went through pretty much each and every account. We had in-depth discussion on areas where expenditures were. We talked a lot about process mapping, and we have started that. I've been working a little bit with Rick Lloyd and with others, team members, to delve into that a little more deeply. It will help us in areas anywhere from contracts. It really is just something that's going to help us focus where we need to, and then we kind of jump over to these other project areas. And that was something that Mick Willis is working with Matt over in the warehouse as far as looking at our methods, as far as supplies for the district, looking at purchase services, capital outlay. And we'll have more for that, with that at a later date, but again, tonight, we're here talking about the transportation area. But this really drove where we were headed, and kind of go into the next slide there, where we were headed as well. What we're looking at is the operating funds, and we knew that we already have a levy for IMRF, and that can be adjusted, but we have to look at that overall area and that we know we're looking for pretty close to $4.4 million. That's our deficit. So instead of starting with the education fund, this will be my fourth year working on the committee, we thought this year, Mick had suggested, why don't we start at the bottom and work our way up, and kind of focus on another fund first? So we started with transportation. So what we're doing is we're looking for 1.4 million. Our goal would be to find the money within each fund and not have one fund support another. So ideally, we want to find the 1.4 million within the transportation fund. Now, this gives sort of a historical perspective to show that the transportation fund isn't just out of whack all of a sudden for a year, but how this has been going through the years. What we want to look at on this slide is that we had, say, back in FY13, that 1213, there's a $1.1 million difference between revenues coming in and expenditures going out. The expenditures are more than the revenues. The following year, 1.6 million difference. The next year, 1.7, then 2.5, and then a projected 1.4 for this year. It does vary. There'll be years where you're purchasing buses, for example, so there is some variance, but it gives you just kind of a sense of where we're at. The next slide breaks it down with a little more detail, but really, that, the first totals across the top there kind of indicate where we're at, as far as you start with the revenues there, and showing the 7.1, 7.2, then down to the 6.7, you know, kind of the high sixes. Now, when we flip over to the next slide, you see where your expenditures are all in that, 8.2, 8.9, 8.4. That's where the problem is. The expenditures are more. And then, you can see on that capital outlay line there that those would be the years where it might be a little bit worse because you're purchasing buses or other items. But this just kind of shows how things are out of balance and where something needs to be done because it's going year after year. And what it's going to take is some sense of having less buses on the road that are going to drive everything else. And I'm going to turn it over then to Josh to explain a little bit more now about the possible solutions that we discussed.
Good evening, everyone. First thing we looked at is we looked at, well, two things. We looked at revenues and expenditures. Obviously, two options. We can try to increase revenue. The other option would be to decrease expenditures. So the first thing we looked at on the revenue side is, we looked at a stop-arm violation program. What this is, is a, it's a camera system that is ran by a company called, or the company that we're looking at was Force Multiplier. And what they do is they install stop-arm violation cameras on the buses. What that does is, obviously, as it sounds, it, it records stop-arm violations. It's basically a pretty autonomous system. We don't really have anything to do with the, the functionality of it. It's controlled completely by Force Multiplier. However, when there are stop-arm violations, the district does receive a portion of the revenues generated and fines. So just to give you a little bit of information, I conducted a survey by utilizing our GPS Zonar system and installing a push button that the drivers can use to record stop-arm violations. It was the most convenient, easy, safe way that we could come up with for tracking these violations. They were installed on 33 vehicles, and what it boiled down to was we were averaging about six per vehicle per month. To extrapolate that over our entire fleet of 119 buses that are out running, that's equivalent to 714 stop-arm violations a month. If you compound that over a nine-month period, that's 6,426 stop-arm violations that are occurring. If you figure the, the fine for that is $150 per violation, you're looking at close to $1 million. That, the company that provides the service keeps 40% of that. That pays for their equipment, their time, their energy, their effort. The remaining balance is then split between the city and the district. And what that could potentially result for us is an approximate $250,000 in the first year. Ideally, the safety is really the concern here. I try to approach this from a safety aspect. We're, we're simply trying to make it safer for the students. But there is the side benefit, if you want to call it, of the, there is revenue that can be generated for these violations. The next possible decrease, again, we're working on our hazard areas. We're getting down to the, the close of having everything prepped and ready for our hazard areas. We may be seeing some possible decreases in reimbursement due to some hazard area changes. But again, that's possible. We're wrapping that up. We're in the process of doing our discretionary points now. On the other side, on the expenditure side, we really looked at three, three areas that we really kind of keyed in on. The first one here is the, the reduction in transportation and related costs provided by supplemental programs. And what this really means is this is different programs that the district has in place that we're providing transportation for. More crucially, where we're providing transportation outside of that homeschool's attendance area. So it's causing the buses to run where they really shouldn't be running. This increases mileage and time. The second thing we looked at is the location of these programs. Again, the location of a program can directly impact transportation. If you have a, a large students that you're pulling, say, from the Mark Bills area, and you place the program at Harrison, obviously, you're going to have increased costs and time and mileage to transport for that. So really looking at where those programs are located in relation to where their students are coming from. And then, lastly, we looked at route elimination. I mean, when we're talking about wanting to reduce costs in transportation, it really means pulling buses off the road. We looked at several things, and what we've come up with was a start time change and developing a three-tier model. And by doing that, it really, it really gave us the most indication for saving money. We're looking at best-case scenario, you're looking at about 880,000 potential savings on a three-tier model with start time changes. And then, obviously, any reductions in transportation routes will in turn reduce, reduce the need for staffing and other operational costs. So a couple of slides here. The first, the next two slides here are basically the same spreadsheet. I actually had to get special paper to print it. What this shows is, it shows a list of different programs that a student could potentially receive transportation outside of their homeschool's attendance area. So to break this down, each column heading has a, an identifier in Skyword that lets us know what program that student's in, and immediately next to it, you'll see the word "out." And what the "out" is for is it represents, out of that program, just how many of those students are being transported outside of that school's attendance area. So on the final slide here, on the second page, really represents that we're transporting, or, excuse me, about 2,100 students are in these programs, and out of that, about 1,129 received transportation outside of their homeschool's attendance area. So that's a breakdown of the different programs that students could be in. This is representative of the vocational programming at Woodruff. Currently, we are shuttling students from their home high schools to Woodruff, back and forth, at different times through the day. This represents each one of those shuttles, and then, obviously, the cost associated with doing this type of transport.
At this time, a couple of our parents that we're working with our committee, if they would want to come, either to this microphone, or feel free to come right on up and introduce yourselves.
Thank you to the program committee for inviting us to speak briefly tonight. My name is Janet Bensglavin, and I'm here with a few other parents of area high school students who are interested in pursuing the recommended later school start times for teenagers. The desire is to better meet the developmental needs of teens with outcome objectives of improved student physical and mental health, increased school attendance, improved student achievement, and higher graduation rates. Referencing the pillars of District 150's strategic plan, and with an objective from the program committee of safely transporting students to school to best fit their developmental needs while decreasing transportation costs, we've put together a preliminary draft that you have in front of you. It's a preliminary draft with recommended considerations for later start times for teens.
My name is Barb, I forget, I know that title. My name is Barb Johnston. I'm also a parent on the, on the committee, and they asked me because I'm also a healthcare provider for pediatric and adolescent patients, so I get to speak and remind you that the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC both recommend that for adolescents, they should not have a school start time that is earlier than 8:30 in the morning. And just to remind you that all of our high schools start at 7:30, which is an hour earlier than what is recommended for their health needs. And for most adolescent patients, I'm going to add a little bit, that adolescents, as you, anybody who has ever had or not an adolescent, they don't go to bed at 8:30 anymore like the little kids, so they are staying up later because they physically don't fall asleep earlier. Their, their body clock and their biometrics are set to fall asleep at a later time, so they are ready to wake up at a later time. When we are waking them up and having them go at 7:30 in the morning, it'd be like the equivalent of us going to school or going to work at 3:30 in the morning, because that's just what their body clocks are set to. So that's just what I just point out, and that the CDC ACHA recommends if you start later, you not only improve their health, their attendance, and their academic, academic performance. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Shannon. Yeah, the teenagers are clapping. Go figure.
Surprise.
And the moms and dads. Real quickly, while Barb recommended the health, or she represented the health field, I'm actually in the field of education, so I'm well-aware of the research regarding both academic and social, emotional, and physical outcomes improving related to delayed start times. But I joined this group just as a mother who was invited to attend after chatting amongst other mothers. I do have four kids, three of which are in the district, so I know the evidence from my own home as well. But we, we realize coming to the table that this is one of various factors that the district has to consider when trying to tackle this very complex business of scheduling an entire school district. So we just jotted down, outlined in this rough draft, some of the opportunities and challenges related to things that are systemic to the district, such as costs, transportation, staffing issues, as well as those issues that are central to families, such as childcare issues, income generation needs, the ability for the students and the parents to enjoy extracurriculars. So there are many, many factors. Thank you for including this one. And as Janet said, we also had some process recommendations that we listed as well. As this topic is further explored, we would hope that we would look externally to model and learn from some comparable districts who have made similar changes. We would hope that all the various discussions would happen with stakeholders and impacted groups and partners. And we would very much expect the district, as usual, to look at internal data to see really how this change could impact all of the factors that we listed before. And last, just thank you so much again for including our input. In my experience, this district really welcomes the input of families and parents and substantive issues, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much. So to build on, to build on this, we, we created a three-tier template, and I want to caution everybody, this is simply just a template. We're not trying to establish what school goes in which tier. This is simply just a template to establish some additional cost savings as far as the transportation is concerned. So in this particular model that we put together, again, there's various start times here. Again, we're not trying to establish any of the start times or end times. But what is very important with this three-tier model is that certain criteria do have to be maintained here in order for us to show some cost savings with this model. So what's important with this model is that there has to be inadequate and consistent time between tiers, and that's very essential to see cost savings. What we would like to see is a minimum of 55 minutes between those tiers, and that gives us enough time to get the students home where they need to be without adding a lot of additional routes simply based on the timeframe. The other thing that we need is balanced tiers. In other words, we cannot have a lot of schools or a lot of routes in one particular tier because that whatever routes wind up in that tier, that's the number of routes we have. So if we have a balanced, in this particular case, I came up with, using our current data, I came up with about 95 routes, and that's a reduction from 117. That's balanced. If we were to load one tier heavier than the other, will we get it up to 105? That's how many routes we have out on the road. So it's very important, again, to get the maximum savings that those tiers be balanced. Also, this also, excuse me, this also takes into consideration that we're not going to increase any transportation and any supplemental programs. So we're not going to add anything in addition. So, example, we, we set up a three-tier system, but they bring on another program and open that program up to be district-wide. That, again, will unbalance this, and there will not be any cost savings with it.
So in conclusion, what we did was go through and see a little bit about the impact of programs on the transportation operations, and kind of looked at the what-if scenario for the three-tier. The takeaway is that it's going to take some combination, it's not just picking an item off the list, it'll take a combination of possible solutions to reach the goal of balancing the transportation budget. So our recommendation is to establish the subcommittee to implement a combination of all possible solutions to reach our goal of a balanced budget for transportation by April 1st, so that we can move ahead with a plan. Questions?
Questions? Comments? Mr. Wather?
Yeah, I have several. Carla, do you have a factor there of the amount of transportation dollars that have been neglected by the state maybe over the last five years? Are we behind in funding on that at this point in time?
We are right now. See, I might have to turn to Mike for that. We don't have our final payment from last year, and we also don't have the first two payments from this year.
We also have, the corrosion has changed because we used to get 80% funding for reimbursement expenses. Now we get 80%, but then they corrode that, so it's been about 72% the last seven or eight years. There's been a feeling at the state level, I think, that transportation has been well-funded.
See, I might have to turn to Mike for that. We don't have our final payment from last year, and we also don't have the first two payments from this year.
We also have, the proration has changed, because we used to get 80% funding for reimbursement expenses. Now we get 80%, but then they prorate that, so it's been about 72% the last seven or eight years. There's been a feeling at the state level, I think, that transportation has been well-funded historically, and so they've just prorated and prorated and prorated. We used to have a very healthy fund within transportation, but we have a million-dollar deficit every year, year after year, after year, suddenly we're in a deficit total, so, and we haven't done anything, anything, added programs to, you know, make it harder to balance over the years.
Thank you. I was aware we were short, I wasn't aware it was that much of a hit, but it makes a difference. We haven't even gotten last year's final payments.
Right.
The other questions I had, I wanted to thank the parent group that did this study. I have, we have an esteemed professor here that can probably talk more about how that works with the different times for kids. I've been an advocate of that for a long time. And I think what's happened is the dollars are finally driving the realization that we have to take a look at different starting and ending times, because the research has been there for a long time, that kids just go different. And there was a reason there was a plot from the high school students back there when they talked about the later starting time. But it does make a difference, but, thank you. It does make a difference if we can work at both ends, so that it helps with transportation and it does help with academics. I mean, that's a win-win, so I really appreciate the time that those parents put in. Had a question too for my transportation friend here. Have we looked at any of the possibilities of different energy sources for the buses? For example, liquid nitrogen or some of the other ones, some of the gas ones that might possibly be cheaper? I've seen there's some other green elements that are going out with the bus now.
Yeah, right now, currently, a majority of our fleet is running diesel. We have in the past had propane-powered vehicles long before I was here. The infrastructure that we had in place for that, we had removed because we did not have success with those propane vehicles, there were a lot of problems with them. The new vehicles that we're looking at purchasing, or that we have purchased, were gasoline vehicles, which is for us a cheaper fuel. They're also more fuel-efficient. Any specifications that we have for future bus purchases, we're looking at alternative fuels like gasoline. I've looked at some propane, natural gas. The problem that we have is the upfront cost. Putting in the tanks, putting in the infrastructure to handle that is really where the cost comes in. So it takes a long, long time to get those cost savings back, especially with fuel prices as low as they have been. It would take 12, 13 years before we would start to see any recoup on any major investment that we had currently with the prices that we've been getting fuel for.
I'm not even sure if it's possible, but I know the auto industry is looking for a push for electric cars. Is that even practical at a bus level?
I've seen some electric buses, but again, the cost factor is just very limiting. They're, to get, you're looking at, you know, a typical diesel or gasoline bus, they were used somewhere in the $60,000 to $90,000 range. Electrics, I've seen over $200,000, $250,000 for electric. So at this current time, they just, they're not cost-effective for what you get.
The last question I had wasn't part of the presentation, but you guys put a lot of effort in restructuring the bus routes this year when we have the kids going over one and a half. One of the concerns I had, and I had some parents call, and we fortunately had a pretty good winter as far as snow, but we have had some cold days. Do you have any data as how that affected student attendance when we had, when you have wind chill factor of about zero or five below, did that affect the number of students going during those days? There was some concern there, and you may not be prepared for it, so I understand.
Personally, I don't track the attendance, so I can't, I really wouldn't be the expert to answer that, but I'm sure, I'm sure we could try to find out on those cold days what the attendance was.
Well, it was a concern when it first came up, when you've got kindergarten, first, second graders having to walk a mile and a half, and if the weather got so cold, were we going to have an effect where we actually lost money because we had students not attending on those days? And so I think, I know you wouldn't have the data, but that may be something for us just to take a look at. We were lucky because it's been a pretty mild winter so far.
Very mild, yes.
I just wanted to get some idea if we can, because I think it may affect the total dollar figure. We're talking about budget for transportation, so.
Well, I mean, we do track that data, and it's pretty much about the same. I know December was a little, slightly lower than other months, but in some cases where the area was hazardous, we reinstituted those buses. But remember the mile and a half, we're following those, you know, the guidelines by the state. So, I mean, if you do it for one, then you have to do it for all, and we'll dig a deeper hole. So, you know, it's, again, that balancing act that needs to be done, but in terms of reconfiguration, I would say overall, I mean, it's gone extremely well.
Good, good. Thank you.
Dr. Babb?
Thanks very much for your report, and thanks also for, as Mr. Waltham mentioned, understanding and reflecting the developmental needs of children, particularly high schoolers. We've known it for a long time. I would simply like to add to that, that I know some kindergarten teachers who would like to start at nine or 10, but I guess that's not a, okay, all right, okay.
We're not there yet. But I must say, when I was principal at Manuel High School, we started at 8:30, right? Our teachers came in and early, and we were able to have collaboration time, and it was really beautiful, because you could do it vertically, you could do it horizontally, by grade level, by content area, across the board, and that worked very, very well for us.
I do have a more serious curiosity, not so much a question, regarding the stop-arm violations, if you could tell me a little bit more about that specifically. Well, let's see, first of all, let's see if I understand you, that there would be a vendor or a company who would sort of run that for us, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. And how, and forgive my naivete, how would the, any violations be processed?
Basically, how it works, to my understanding, is it's a three-camera system. I'll explain it from start to finish the way it was explained to me. The cameras are mounted on the side of the bus, near the stop-arm. If someone runs a stop-arm, it takes a picture of them before the stop-arm, at the stop-arm, then beyond it, and then it takes a close-up of the license plate. That in turn then is sent, that information, that data is collected from the bus and is sent to the company that maintains that. They basically filter through it to see if there's anything that is irrelevant, a dog ran through, whatever the case may be. Those are then forwarded to the Peoria Police Department for approval or disapproval. So the Peoria Police Department will look at this and see if it meets their criteria. They either approve or disapprove the citation. If it's approved, the company that's handling the stop-arm violations then mails those to the owner of the vehicle for payment.
So the violation notices don't come from police, they come from the company?
The notices themselves, the way I understand, were directly came from the company, so they incurred the cost for that, but they are approved or disapproved by the police department.
Okay, great. And, and did the company give you any information about the relative incidence slash cost of any challenges?
No, actually, I'm working on that. I'm working to get some information on a percentage or a cost on any that were contested. In other words, I want to know what their process is, do our drivers need to attend, those kinds of things. So I'm following up with the vendor to get some information on that.
Great. So the $250,000 at this point is just an estimate, and the, there's some additional details that, including challenges, or the, the other thing that I was thinking about is what's the error rate that has, it's similar to challenges, but every electronic system's going to have an error rate, and that would be false positives as well as misses? Do we have that data, or is that upcoming?
No, I do not. I had a meeting with them over a year ago when we had some discussion with it, and what they have found is that it tends to tail off. So the, this, again, is first-year data, I want to caution that, because, again, the hope is that as people get these citations, we see it decrease. But as far as an error rate or a percentage of how many are erroneous, I don't have that information.
Okay, and one last one, and I don't know, this one, Mr. Redberg, might go to you. My understanding is that similar technologies in cities for stoplights are being challenged on privacy rights. Do you know, would that apply here? Do you know about that?
I've heard about the challenges to the stoplights in the cities, I've not heard about these systems being challenged in that regard.
Would you see a parallel?
Yes, yes, there is a parallel. It's, you know, it's, I think it comes from a lot of people's perceptions that that's kind of Big Brother, and there being cameras everywhere watching. I think it's a general privacy kind of concern.
Yeah. Actually, my understanding is that there's actual legislation in the works for this in Illinois. Are you aware of that at all?
Well, there is legislation authorizing this, as well as the light areas, and as well as, you'll drive down the road, and it's a construction site, and they'll say it's going to be camera monitored. That's a similar type of arrangement, there's a contractor behind there.
Well, I meant, I meant that there's not current legislation in place, but there are bills, my understanding, there might be bills forwarded that would challenge these kinds of technologies.
Well, that wouldn't surprise me at all, but I'm not aware of any specific one.
Okay, great, thank you.
It is a topic of general concern among the public.
Yeah, right. Thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Shaw?
One question on the, still on the vendor for the swing-arm cameras. Have you investigated any other vendors that might take a more competitive split than 40%?
Actually, 40% was a good one, most wanted half. The biggest advantage to this particular vendor, and why I've kind of zeroed in on this vendor, is most vendors will do a percentage of your fleet. So in other words, they'll start with 10% or 20% of your fleet, and then kind of see how it goes. This vendor will come in and do 100% of the fleet. They'll outfit absolutely everything, so you get everything right from the beginning. And that really kind of zeroed in. There are some other additional benefits with their system, that, again, can be installed, such as panic buttons, additional cameras on the vehicle that can be used for other safety aspects. All ties in with their stop-arm violation camera system, and then the biggest benefit is there's zero cost, zero upfront cost to us to do this, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of, one question and one comment. Have we tracked the number of incidents that have been over the years? Say you took one year and tracked those, the reason why you decided to look at this company?
You mean the people who are running through?
Yeah, have we tracked that?
Yes, we've done various surveys. The problem always with the survey was it was done on a piece of paper, and unfortunately, the driver's attention needs to be on loading, unloading, what the vehicles are doing, not writing down on a piece of paper. So it was very, it was very unreliable. We put our heads together and tried to come up with something that we could, you know, get some accurate data, but again, be very simple for the driver to use. So we utilized our existing Zonar technology in a way that it really wasn't designed for, but we just essentially, the Zonar can log an event, and that event can be whatever we want it to be. It could be a door open, it could be the bus is put in reverse. We utilize the push button on an event, so that the drivers just simply push the button and it's logged on the Zonar. That allowed us to run a report in which we got some, some pretty good data. Unfortunately, I can't compare that to any previous data, because those figures were just unreliable.
Okay, and then the other couple of comments I had was, I still have the folder on the three-tier system that we already implemented a few years back, and that's probably because I've been here so long. But, and you were probably on board then too. Is the three, this three-tier system that you're proposing different than that three, because some of these slides were the same as what I've seen before?
Fundamentally, the difference between this three-tier and the three-tier that was implemented is that difference in time. Ultimately, the middle tier got crunched on the previous model, and it gave us about 20 minutes to run the route, which just wasn't enough time. So what happened was we added more and more and more and more vehicles to reduce the amount of time that those vehicles had to run. With this particular model, again, to make it work, we've got to have a good amount of time between those tiers in order to run those routes, otherwise there would be no cost savings.
That's what I was wondering, because it didn't, it didn't work before. I didn't know the reason why, but the research on high schoolers wanting to start later has been talked about and talked about and talked about for years and years. And then my last question was, how diverse was the committee, that parent committee, that, the committee that put this whole thing together?
They're parents that are from Rich Woods, and they had offered their expertise, but I wouldn't call it a diverse group, no, I agree there, but it's a group that came forward and had a real interest in this area and had done research and background in it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for this particular presentation? Thank you. We have now come to the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the Board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public School, District 150. The Board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights to free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the Board's authority. There are some issues we are not able to, at liberty, to discuss, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will have a staff person help you. In addition, the Board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box over on, by the back door, by the front door, for your convenience. And our Board Secretary will be collecting those comments after each Board meeting and compiling them and sharing them with the Board and Superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the Board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the full Board. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Sharon Cruz. Good evening, Ms. Cruz.
I take no pleasure in presenting this information tonight. For the first 57 days of the school year, 1,583 referrals were written at Manuel. Either these were two referrals for every student, or there were many repeat offenders. Please take an honest look at this data to recognize the problems that exist in varying degrees at all schools, not just at Manuel. The consequences meted out in September did not encourage better behavior. 410 referrals for the 19 days of September increased to 658 referrals for the 19 days of October. The increase of 248 indicates that there was, that what was done in September did little to lead students to change their behaviors in October. For example, in September, there were 80 offenses related to misuse of cell phones, et cetera. That number doubled to 173 in October. Referrals for other classroom disruptions went from 90 to 146. Please don't be tempted to mitigate the increase or blame teachers for writing too many referrals. My conservative estimate is that every classroom disruption takes away at least 15 minutes of teaching time, the time the student is disrupting the class, and the time for the teacher to try to resolve the problem or to write the referral. There were 1,398 referrals written for classroom disruptions. That amounts to at least 349 hours, or 75-hour days of lost teaching time that can never be recovered. There was no consequences indicated for 100 offenses, 50 of which were classroom disruptions. That is either poor record-keeping or poor policy. 570 consequences for classroom disruptions were listed as office referral rewrite. I was told that this designation indicates- I was told that this designation indicates a referral for a student that has had more than one offense in a day. So, the referral rewritten is rewritten to encompass all offenses and a consequence assigned to cover all the offenses. So, are these five hundred and seventy referrals actually for more than one offense? I will risk saying that detentions and in-school suspensions are not effective consequences. Three hundred and sixty-six students were assigned detentions and a hundred and seventy-eight served in-school suspensions. I believe the eighty-nine students whose consequence was out of a school suspension might well view it as a vacation day. Because offenders are allowed to make up their work, time out of class is not a consequence that will change behaviors. I believe the data will prove that. In fact, these offenders get an extra time to complete assignments. The eighty-nine out of school consequences were issued to only twelve students for classroom behaviors. Fifty were from gym, sixty-two for behaviors in hallways, the cafeteria, or outside. The most baffling consequence is that one hundred and fifty students were subjected to a consequences, to a consequence listed as a conference with the student. Hopefully, all students sent to the office with a referral are subjected to a conference with an administrator, so how is this a consequence? A conference with a parent was a consequence for only thirty-six offenders. This least-used conference might be the most meaningful of all. A consequence listed as parent contact applied to only fifteen offenders, two of whom were of special, out of special ed classes. Twenty-nine lost privileges. What privileges? It appears that the others lost nothing except learning the reality that they will face in the real world, that actions have consequences. The real losers are the students who come to school ready to learn but are cheated by, of learning time by those who receive no meaningful consequences. Of course, offenders often lose learning time too. Please do all you can to turn this around and bring back the manual I once knew. Thank you.
Mr. Terry Knapp?
Yes, good evening. Today, I woke up at seven-thirty this morning and read on the front page of the Journal Star, "Quest Considers Balanced Calendar." And I know Ms. Croft, Dr. Croft, excuse me, and Mr. Walter know what I did at seven-thirty-one. Now, it was a seven-thirty, I read what I do at seven-thirty-one was call the superintendent's office at Rock Island. And then I called the union at the behest of the superintendent's office because all of their stuff is negotiated. Everything that they do in Rock Island is negotiated. It's not an authorization of the principal or the Board of Education who's not elected. It's, it's a combination of things. It impressed me that in this article, it said, and kind of gave one the belief that six weeks, the Quest was going to take six weeks off in the summer and that perhaps Rock Island did this. Rock Island does not do that. Rock Island gets out of school about June first and will not start school before August first. That's negotiated. It's agreed to by the administration and the teachers. It's not mandated. So, they have about nine weeks off in the summertime. They have a couple of intercessions, which was mentioned in this article, and intercessions, I guess, is where teachers work with the kids in the two weeks off, and I think they have two intercessions at Rock Island, and both of those are negotiated. Again, the teachers are paid a negotiated rate. Now, as you all know, at Quest, the first five years, they could not have a union. It's my understanding that the next five years, they couldn't join the local union and they still have yet to entertain an idea or be approached on a unionization. Not, not that they should or they shouldn't, but that's just a fact. As I continue here, I want to congratulate the, the boys' basketball team at Quest. They're number one in the state, as you all know. Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Trotter, the athletic director, Mr. Jenkins, head basketball coach, have done an outstanding job. It's really amazing to me as a teacher because of the forty or so seniors that they have, you know, nine of them are pretty good basketball players out of the senior class. So, you figure twenty girls and twenty boys, you got nine great basketball players, that's amazing to me. It's just an observation. As you all know, you give five point two million dollars to Quest. It's taxpayer dollars. It's not something that Quest raises. It's dollars given to them by the school district and the taxpayers. I am yet to figure out if Quest considers itself a District 150 school or a nonentity or an entity to themselves. I don't know that. I know the other day, I was at the breakfast, and when they asked for the administrators from District 150 to stand up, the administrator from Quest did not stand up. So, I assume she doesn't think that she's a member of District 150, is best I can understand. I attended the Quest lottery last spring and saw seventy-five students picked by lottery and the alternatives picked. Then I ordered up through FOIA the class sizes at Quest and I find out they got eighty-five. Where did the other ten kids come from? Did somebody on the board or the administration just go out and pick ten more kids and put them in the fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth grade classes? Because last year, they had seventy-five. They had seventy-five, and I remember going with Ms. Cruz to the first charter meeting six years ago or seven years ago down at the Civic Center, and they said they were going to pick seventy-five per class. Now, their senior class last year graduated thirty-nine. They started with seventy-five, graduated thirty-nine. They started this year somewhere with seventy-five. They now down to forty-two. That was before Christmas. I'm sure they're down to less than that. Their junior classes was down to forty-eight already prior to Christmas. You know, their junior class. You know, I know last year, they picked eighty-eight in their freshman class. I don't know how they got by with picking eighty-eight. They're supposed to pick seventy-five in the freshman class. But they picked now eighty-eight because they're probably going to counsel out or get rid of a number of those students so that they, I guess, wind up with forty-two or thirty-nine or forty-four. I don't know. But it's really weird to me how this thing works. It's also very important to me to reemphasize, because we had these test scores here, that the test scores for students who are going a longer school year and a longer school day are almost at the bottom of District 150's test scores. I don't understand that. I mean, maybe tonight, they'll give an explanation of how that works, but I think that longer year and a longer school day does not produce better test results, obviously. I want to mention also, there was an FBI investigation, search warrants and so forth a couple of years ago, that nobody pursued. The FBI came in and took all the records out of, out of Quest over on University Street. No one ever told the public what that was all about. I don't know of any other school that's ever been serving warrants and having their records taken by the FBI.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is, it's just happened to be, is a public hearing. And this hearing is to receive public comments on the proposal to sell general obligation bonds. That's alternative revenue, which is an alternative revenue source, not to exceed fifty million dollars for the purpose of improving and altering sites and repairing and equipping school buildings and facilities for the district. And any person desiring to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony with respect to thereto. I will now entertain a motion from the board to issue the notification, to issue the binary bonds in the hearing for this, for this purpose of improving, altering site, and repairing and equipping school buildings and facilities for the district. I'd like to get a motion.
So moved.
And we'll ask if there are any comments from the board regarding this issue? None from the board? Okay.
Is the public speaker on?
Then I would like to ask the secretary to...
May the public speak?
I'm not at that point yet. I know.
We're getting there.
Got it, I've got it here. Don't worry. I'd like the secretary to read into the record and, or record the record, any written or comments or testimony received concerning the proposed issuance of bonds. And at this point, I would entertain any oral or written testimony from the public concerning the proposed issuance of these bonds. Are there any members of the public would like to speak? Mr. Knapp?
Yes, and I've talked about this a little bit before, but I...
We need to do a roll. Come on.
Before, before the public?
Yes, on the motion.
On the motion? Or I thought it was after comments. It doesn't say. Mr. Redberg?
Well, you have a motion to open the hearing. I think the practice of the board has...
Okay, to open the hearing. Just one moment, sir. Would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Sorry, it wasn't on my board. Now, public hearing, public comments.
Yes, I'm Terry Knapp, nine twenty-two West Wilshire Drive, Peoria. I've addressed the board before about supporting the tax referendum that was, was passed this past fall, and I think it was good for the school district. I, and many other people I've talked to, questioned whether or not it's prudent before we collect a penny to pay somebody two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go out and float a bond referendum. You know, other people, other superintendents I've talked to said, why don't you just take the money, four point two million dollars a year, four point five million dollars a year, and spend it as you get it, instead of spending fifty million dollars upfront, bang, so the next school board in two or three years that sits at the table is paying your debt. They're going to be paying your debt. They're not going to be building or making or producing anything for your schools until they run out of that fifty million dollars that you're going to pass in a bond referendum. I also stand here before you again, because I asked last time, why no money was put aside for the stadium if, in fact, the deal with Adam White and others falls through, there should be somewhat of a substantial amount, as much as five million dollars and more, set aside out of that fifty million dollars for the stadium. You, the board, have let the stadium go into disrepair, have ignored the kids in our community, have ignored a facility because you were losing three hundred thousand dollars a year. Please give it away if you're not going to set aside money to do something with it. It's crazy to let a facility with your name on it go into such disrepair. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Again, if there are any written comments, we would entertain those as well. Okay, I would like to announce that all persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral or written testimony with respect to the proposed issuance of bonds. And at this point, I'd like to have the secretary call the roll on the vote to close the hearing.
I move that we close the hearing.
Who wrote this?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw, second?
I second.
Oh, okay. Dr. Bob, second. All right, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six size motion care.
Next on the agenda is information items, and the first information item is a Quest Charter School update.
What I'll do, Ms. Ross, is while they're getting ready, I'll introduce Dr. Wood. She's going to present to us today, and I see there are a number of board members and supporters from Quest, so welcome. So, Dr. Wood, please come on down. Dr. Wood has served in a number of leadership roles in the field of education. She actually began her career right here with PR Public Schools, serving as the principal of Northmore Edison for about nine years. She was actually one of the youngest principals to serve at the age of twenty-six. Dr. Woods led Northmore Edison for, again, nine years, and the school progressed. She drastically closed the achievement gap. They won lots of awards, including the Blue Ribbon Award, so we have something in common. And, and also, I know an award that she's really proud of, the Edison Learning's Double Five-Star Award. Following her tenure at Northmore, she left and served as an Executive Director of Leadership for Edison. Then she also did a lot of work as, as an independent consultant. She's gotten lots of awards, including the Twenty-Five Women in Leadership, and also recently, one of, she was named one of the Peoria's areas forty leaders under forty. She is well-qualified, has quite a bit of degrees in early childhood education, elementary education, and so forth, has the superintendent endorsement. So, she is thrilled to be leading Quest Charter Academy, and so welcome and share with us how Quest is progressing.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. We are excited to present to you, and I'm going to let our board chairman, Mr. Tom Fleury, start us off.
Good evening, and President Ross, board members, Superintendent Karat, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I have the pleasure of serving with several of you on Alignment Peoria, and I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I'm here as president of the board of Quest Charter Academy, as Dr. Wood said. I look up on the board dais and see people who are serving their community out of a labor of love. I don't think any of you are up there for the money that you're paid to do this. And that's quite true at Quest as well. And to that end, I'd like to recognize my fellow board members. If you would please stand, board members who are here from Quest Charter Academy tonight. I'd also like to recognize the staff and administrators and teachers at Quest Charter Academy. Would you please stand as well? Also, parents and teachers that are at Quest Charter Academy, please stand and be recognized as well. Having succeeded Glenn Barton as president of the Peoria Charter Academy Board last January, this is my first annual report to you, the District 150 School Board, about Quest. Many of you are new to the school board, and to that end, I'm going to give you a little background in terms of history. Peoria Charter Academy was formed in two thousand and ten, and as you may remember, the first five years, we were managed by concept schools, which provided our teachers, our curriculum, our systems and procedures, everything that we needed to operate as a school. In June of two thousand and fifteen, the Charter Academy Board took over the running of the school, and at that time, we hired Dr. Nicole Wood as our executive director and the remainder of the administrative team. They have functioned in that capacity since that time, and we're very proud of what they've accomplished. A little background on Quest itself, the student demographics. In the first six years of Quest, we're almost identical to that of Peoria Public Schools, but in the last year, we've noticed a bit of a shift in the demographics, and you'll notice that as well. We still mirror very closely the racial and economical background of the students that attend District 150 with our, our students as well. As you know, our students are not selected on the basis of anything other than residency in the, in the school district itself and the, being chosen from that lottery. Fact of the matter is, is that if a student is chosen from lottery, then siblings are allowed to attend because we don't want to break up any families. Along those lines, as I said, our next screen will show you the new chapter that we began in, in July of two thousand and fifteen, and you'll see there our administrative staff, which includes Deborah LaHood as business manager, Robin McIntyre as high school principal, Cindy Artist Jenkins as our Director of Development and Communications, and Barb Clausen as our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And they all report to, as we noted earlier, Dr. Nicole Wood. The next slide will tell you very clearly what our mission is. The mission for... The mission, for those who can't read it from in the back, mission of Quest Academy is to provide a diverse student body with an innovative world-class education, rich in math, science, and technology, focused on preparing students to become bold enquirers, problem solvers, and ethical leaders. Quest graduates will be skill-ready for post-secondary education to meet the challenges of a competitive global workforce. With that, I'd like to turn our strategic plan overview to Dr. Wood. Dr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Fleegy. Mr. Fleegy went over our mission, and coupled with that is our ultimate vision, which is to have a 100% college acceptance rate for every graduating class. We have six core values that really stand at the heart of everything we do, and those are respect, responsibility, integrity, courage, curiosity, and effort. When our team came on board about a year and a half ago, the first thing we did was take a look at the current reality for Quest. The school had been established for five years, and we did what we called collaborative quality school analysis, which is like a 360-degree look at the school, figuring out what are the strengths of Quest and what are those opportunities for improvement. From there, that prompted us into strategic planning, and the board and staff had done a lot of work, looking at the big rocks, looking at what are those things that might be holding us back from reaching our fullest potential. So we built upon that and decided to focus on four key areas, and we, I'm sorry, if you could go back one side, Lisa. We focused on four key areas and did extensive research in those areas and came up with action plans. So this work was led by Dr. Tom Simpson, and here are the four categories. I will note that in your orange folders, you'll see the entire strategic plan and all of the action plans. We're not going to go into that much detail tonight, but here are the categories. The first one is we will increase family engagement. And so we have hired a parent and family liaison and are doing a number of different activities around increasing engagement. The second one was looking at the use of the school day and the school year. So how do we use the time that we have with our students? And I'll tell you, one of those changes we made goes with a lot of the things we've heard tonight, so we did go for that later start time. Our students at the high school, I'm sorry, at the middle school are starting at 8:30. Our high school students are starting at 8:45, and our entire staff has daily professional development starting at 7:30 in the morning, and that has been a wonderful shift. In addition, as you have probably seen in the Journal Star today, we are proposing a balanced calendar for next year, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that's going to look like. We invite you to our town hall this Wednesday at Quest High School at 5:00, where we'll go more in-depth about the year-long research that's been done and the committee of parents, students, and staff members, and board members that have been working on that project. The third one is providing innovative programming and course offerings to maximize learning for individual students. We'll hear a little bit more about that later in the presentation with the launch of our Career Academies next year. And finally, we'll provide alternatives to reduce disruptive behavior and promote social emotional supports for our students. Okay, Lisa. In everything we do, we hold ourselves highly accountable, and we categorize everything into four points of accountability: culture of academic excellence, positive culture, community engagement, fiscal responsibility. And we keep an extensive dashboard, which our board members, our senior leadership team, and our instructional leadership team review on an ongoing basis in that cycle of continuous improvement. So we're going to go through each of those. The first one is culture of academic excellence. Quest has higher requirements for graduation at the high school level. We have a rigorous college prep curriculum that's heavily steeped in technology and STEM. You can see that we require 28 credits of coursework, and you see how those are broken out there. We also start pre-engineering coursework at our middle school through our Gateway to Technology program, and that continues into our high school with our Project Lead the Way program. We require job shadowing or career exploration, a minimum of 10 hours. We also require 40 hours of community service at our high school. And finally, our seniors get involved in a senior capstone project, and that project is where they research, develop, and present on a topic to a panel that will make a positive impact in our community. Some of the things that our team did to boost academic achievement, we're very proud of the way we are moving towards more of a personalized learning approach. So what that means is that because we're small, we can really work with our students on an individual level to have that personal learning plan that is tracked and monitored continually. Every day, we have custom learning time, and that's 45 minutes a day in both of our buildings where students are working at their level. So if I'm a student that has some gaps in my learning and I need to get caught up and need remediation, I can do that in reading and math during that time through these adaptive programs. If I'm an enriched student, I can get acceleration during that time. Those academic support tools that we use, things like Lexia for reading, Khan Academy, Dreambox for middle school math, and Alex for high school math, and we are seeing great results. We hired an RTI coach, Ms. Kurtz, who's sitting down here running our slideshow today, and she's tracking and monitoring that data and working with our schools to ensure that those personalized learning plans are being met for each student, flagging up students who maybe aren't progressing and putting in additional interventions and support. We have advisory every single day, so the way our advisory works is that every teacher serves a small group of students in their advisory. Those advisory teachers are like their coach, so they sit down with their students on a routine basis, they look at their goals, set targets, so our NWA goals, and how are you going to meet those targets? They also are there when our students come to their student-led conferences, which happen four times a year. Students present their data to their parent or guardian with their advisory teacher present, so it's really a team aspect of support. Oh, and I should mention, all of our students also participate in a club, at least one club, during the school day. Okay, moving on to academic success, there's a lot of data that we have presented for you in your packets, because we know we are limited on time today, but I'm going to share with you just a couple of pieces of data that we're very proud of. So we use NWEA to track our progress. This is a nationally-normed assessment that is used throughout the country. This has been the measure that Quest has used since day one. As we know, Park is very new and very different than what we've all been used to, so we use NWEA as our measure. NWEA gives students an individual growth target, called a RIT target, at the beginning of the year, and says, "This is where we need you to get to by the end of the year." According to NWEA, if 50% of your students hit that target, that's considered good progress. If 60% hit that target, that is excellent progress, and 70% is considered outstanding progress. We have set an aggressive goal of increasing the percent of students who meet their individual targets by 15% over the next three years. So for this year, that's a 5% growth target. Our target in reading is 63%. At mid-year, we have 57% of our students who are hitting their target. Our target in math this year is 52%. You can see we have already exceeded that at 55%. This one is the most impressive, and this is the question most people ask: how do students do over time? Well, let's start with where students come in. As you know, our students come from all over Peoria, you know, so many different schools feed into Quest. And this year's fifth-grade class, we have 30% of our students who are reading at grade level, 70% are not. In terms of math, 18% are performing at grade level. What we notice is that by year three, the numbers start to move, and we start to get kids over that hump. By year five, you're looking at more than double the growth in reading and more than triple the growth in math, and I am just so proud of our staff. I think that that is outstanding. We've had two classes so far able to take the ACT. Here are our results. Very proud of Quest scholars at 19.3%, which is just slightly under Richwood's and the state average, and well above our other two Peoria high schools. Positive culture. In looking at our average daily attendance, our target is 96%. We are currently at 95% and very proud of the attendance rate of our students. Every year, our families have an opportunity during open enrollment, which opens on February 1st, during open enrollment to first say, "Yes, we would like to come back to Quest," or "No, we're going to make a different choice." So we go through that process during open enrollment, and we know that, you know, different schools are good for different kids, and so that is why we give that option. But most of our families say, "This is a great fit for us," and our student retention rate last year was 92.3%. Currently, our parent involvement is 70%, and we're going to talk on the next slide more about that. Family engagement is one of our strategic planning focus areas. We were not satisfied at all with the data from last year. We had 51% of our families engaged, and we measured that by our conferences that are held four times a year. This year, we have done a number of things to try to increase that engagement. One of the things we started the year off with was advisory meetings with all of our families and their advisory teacher, and then moving into student-led conferences, which we're getting very good feedback from our families about. So currently, we're at 70%. Our target by 2019 is to be at 80%. Extracurricular, we have a lot of great extracurriculars, and again, hats off to our staff, because when you have a staff of 61 who are trying to essentially lead many districts inside of a district, everybody wears a lot of hats. So our teachers not only teach and serve on the leadership team, but they may coach two or three different sports or competitive academic groups. They wear many hats, and we are so appreciative of that. So you can see all of the different groups that we have, things like FTC Robotics, where students go and design and build and program their robot and compete in competition. At the middle school level, we have First Lego League, and we have our Technology Student Association at the high school. I was going to mention, but Mr. Knapp beat me to it, that our boys' basketball team we're very proud of. They are currently ranked number one in Class 1A, and they're only a third-year varsity team, so you've got to come out and watch them. They're just doing outstanding. So there's all of our sports. We have a very special relationship with Peoria Heights, who is in similar size to us. We co-op with them now for football, girls' basketball at the high school level, wrestling and bowling, which, you know, gives us the opportunity to offer more. All right. Like every school in Peoria, discipline is something that we have to be very targeted in our approach. At our middle school, we've tried a number of different things this year that have all had huge success. One of the things we did was we opened a school within a school for 20 students who were struggling with meeting the expectations. And I'm proud to say that that program, smaller environment, more focused attention, and sort of a reteach and reculture of our school, has just yielded incredible results. We have five of the 20 students are graduating out, they're phasing out slowly, back into the regular environment. We also brought in Elite to help us with managing behavior in the halls as we went to reculture and re-norm the building. As we know, the learning environment is key. We have to get the culture right in order to be able to let our teachers do what they do best, which is teaching, and Elite has been a huge support to us. We also opened an in-school suspension room where students receive tutoring and get to work on their work while they are serving a consequence. That has also been effective. We have seen a 70% decrease in referrals from September to December at our middle school, and that is just kudos to a very targeted bit of work from a lot of people. Our high school's taken a very different approach this year with the restorative justice model. They hold restorative conferences, so if there's a problem, the teacher and the student are sitting down and conferencing and getting to the root of the issue, getting students the support that they need. They also have a restorative or care room that students can go to when they just need a break and get refocused and get back to class. So that model has been working extremely well at our high school, and kudos to our high school team. All right, next we're going to talk about community engagement. This is really one of the amazing strengths of Quest, and as you read, there's a piece in your packet that goes extensively through the history of Quest and how it came to be, and you will notice a lot of these great partnerships were with us from the beginning, advocating for a school like this. Our partnerships are crucial for our success. These folks provide mentoring support to our students, they allow our students to come on to their campus and engage in experiential learning, hands-on projects. For example, we have a group, a problem design solve group, that went over to Bradley's campus and worked alongside Bradley's students to solve a problem together. Those are really great partnerships, and as we launch our Career Academies, those partnerships are going to be even more intentional in what we can provide. As we are a school of the community, we believe in teaching our students that it is critically important to give back to our community. So these are some of the community service projects that we engage in. We organize for our students outside of the 40 hours of community service that we ask them to complete during their high school years. Our group of seniors, our small group of seniors last year, completed over 2,500 hours of community service. I just think that is a great skill to have for life. Moving forward, we have set our growth targets. I recognize that is hard to see, but I'm pretty sure that is in your packet as well. But our five targets for the next three years are as follows. Annually, Quest seniors will have a 100% college acceptance rate. By June of 2019, Quest will have a 15% gain in reading, from 58% of students meeting their individual growth target to 73% as measured by NWA, which is considered outstanding progress. By June 2019, Quest will have a 15% gain in math, from 47% of students meeting their individual growth target to 62% as measured by NWA, considered excellent progress. Annually, Quest will have a 96% student attendance rate, currently at 95, and a 97% staff attendance rate, currently over 98%. And again, a huge kudos to our staff for being there every day for our kids. By June 2019, Quest will have an 80% family engagement involvement rate, currently at Finally, the last two pieces of our strategic plan that will be lifted for next year are the balanced calendar. We are looking to reduce the summer slide, that is our goal, to increase student achievement. So we're looking to go to a six-week summer with more breaks throughout the year and also providing opportunities on those breaks for students to have some innovative programming. also providing opportunities on those breaks for students to have some innovative programming. At the high school, moving to career academies, so freshman academy will be designed to support students as they transition into high school. And there, they'll be doing a number of activities through the Career Cruising Portal, working with our college and career counselor to identify the pathway that is best for them. And then, as sophomores, juniors and seniors, they'll be in our college and career academies. You can see, we've got three. Communications Broadcasting Information Pathway, Health, Human and Public Service Pathway, and Engineering, Business, Manufacturing and Technology Pathways. We'd like to end with a few testimonials and, if you'll go ahead and go forward, there you go. I would be remiss if I didn't pause here for a moment and recognize the man with the dream. For those of you who don't know this outstanding man, it's Glenn Barton. He is the man who really was behind the creation of Quest. And we are just so blessed that he spent his last years working with us, that him and Polly remained here in Peoria after he retired as the CEO of Caterpillar, and that he had a passion for changing education for Peoria youth. He could be seen doing all sorts of things at our school. I said he was like the director of Buildings and Grounds. He always had plans in his hands. He was always walking around doing something, painting walls, putting together desks, whatever it took to take our old buildings and make them beautiful for our kids. And it was truly a labor of love. And we are just honored that we've all been able to catch that fire and that dream and vision that he had and carry that on in his memory. These are some notes. When I went to visit him for the last time, he asked me one question. First question was, how are our graduates doing? Because he was so proud to see that first group graduate and shake their hands. And so, we reached out to all of them and all of their answers are in your packet, some really heartfelt testimonies. But, these are the things the students wrote back to Mr. Barton. And where is that class now? Our first class? Sixty-three percent of them are at a four-year college or university, twenty-nine percent at a junior college, five percent in the trades, and three percent serving our country in the military. All right. And I'm going to take us back to where we began, back to our mission, back to our vision, our values. I know this was a very fast presentation, but I hope it gave you a flavor of who we are and what we're trying to do. But, I want you to see the heart of Quest and hear from a couple of our members of our school community.
Hello. My name is Lincoln Williams. I would like to tell you why I chose Quest Charter Academy. I have a chance to explore the many different cultures and make many great friends. Quest encourages me to be curious, hardworking, and is giving me the tools to attain my goals. I am on a quest to be the best. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shanice Bramley. I am an eighth grader at Quest Charter Academy. And I am staying at Quest because I believe that I am growing in my epidemics for myself. I think I'm doing better than I ever have before and I believe that I should just keep on going and finish up strong. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lance S. I've been attending Quest since the sixth grade and I'm a senior now. I'm, attending Quest gave me the opportunity to do things that I might not have been able to do at a larger school. And just got accepted to Elm Hurst, so I'll be attending there in the fall.
And he's one of our basketball stars.
Good afternoon. I'm Samantha Stenson. I'm one of the teachers at the high school. And I was asked to talk about why I teach at Quest. And to give you an honest answer, I took the job because I needed a job. But, if you ask me why I still teach at Quest, I would say, I have a vivid memory, and it's funny that you talked about Mr. Barton, but I have this vivid memory of coming in the week before my first, you know, school year to get my classroom ready. And there was an older gentleman on his hands and knees fixing the toilet in the women's bathroom. And he introduced himself and talked to me and I didn't know who he was and I just thought, oh, that must be the custodian. And then, a week later, I was in staff training and that same gentleman stood up and introduced himself again. And I thought, why is the custodian talking at staff training? And he started to talk about his mission for Quest and how he wanted all of our students to go and get an education and go great, get great careers and improve their lives and then come back into Peoria and pour that into Peoria. And so, I just remember his passion and that burned so strongly into my mind. And so, when I teach and I look at my students, and I teach freshmen and sometimes they're crazy, but when I look at them, I just see that for them. I see, and that was Glenn Barton, by the way, who said that. And someone leaned over and said, you know who that is? And I said, our custodian? And they said, no, that's Glenn Barton. And I was like, who's Glenn Barton? Because I'm not from Peoria and I didn't know. And he said, he was, he was the CEO of Caterpillar. And I was so embarrassed. But, um, but I just look at our students and I see that every single day. I see that vision that, and I tell that to them. I say, you're going to be successful and you're going good places. And I want to bump into you as an adult and I want to hear the stories and I want to be so proud of you and so excited for your life. So, that's why I continue to work at Quest.
Hi. My name is Marla Bramley and my daughter attends Quest Middle School. And I'm just excited because it feels like we're a little family and you can go to the school and talk to the teachers. And she's excited about school because, trust me, at first she wasn't. But, I'm glad that she's into school and she's getting challenged. So, that's why she'll continue to go to Quest.
Thank you. All right. And we're going to finish by ending with our Quest pledge, which is what we have our students and our staff say every single morning as we start off our day. And I'm going to ask our staff to stand up and join us because Lincoln's going to lead us in this.
As a valuable member of the Quest Charter Academy community, today I commit myself to growth, achievement and success. I am respectful, responsible, courageous, curious, honest and hardworking. I pledge to use the tools I have been given to realize my talents, fulfill my dreams and attain my goals. I'm on a quest to be the best. Woo!
Nice job. And we ask that, if you are interested, I'm sure there are many questions that you have. There's a lot of information in your packet and we know you have many more things on your agenda tonight, but we offer private tours every single day. Please come see us. We would love to take you on a tour of one or both of our campuses. Just email info@questpeoria.org and we'll get that set up. We would love to have you come see what we do. And like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Wood?
I don't.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for your thorough presentation. And I am impressed by what I'm seeing and hearing. I do have a couple of questions for you. First of all, before I have questions, I would like to commend your teachers. As you all know from listening to me over the short time I've been here, I'm very much a teacher supporter. And I've been married thirty years to the best kindergarten teacher on the planet, so I know the work that you do. So, that being said, one of the things that I think I heard you mention in terms of your extracurriculars is that your teachers wear many hats. Are they compensated for their many hats?
Yes, they sure are.
Excellent. That's a great answer. In terms of your administrat-, oh, what's the demographics of your teachers? Racial ethnic?
I would have to get the exact numbers for you. I can get that back to you. I know, hold on one second. Of course, I can't find my page where I had a few notes. Thirteen percent of our teaching staff are African-American. The rest are Caucasian for the most part. I would have to do a further breakdown. But, that is an area we are really working on increasing.
So...
Let me jump in there and add a little bit to that. Al Hooks, who's a former board member, and Will Ball are both tasked with pursuing racial diversity in our staff on a monthly basis. Every board meeting, that's a topic that we cover. It's a topic that's very important to us. And these two gentlemen are very involved in setting up the pipelines that we need to access African-American instructors because we recognize that children need to be taught by people who look like them and we're making every effort to accomplish that. It's a major focus for us at Quest.
So, you have about, you have seventy percent who are African-American or Latino and thirteen percent African-American teachers now. Is that correct?
Approximately.
Approximately?
Yeah.
And, and if I heard you correctly, you're, you have initiatives underway to diversify your staff. Your administrative staff is five white women. What initiatives do you have to diversify that?
Well, I, I would say it's the same as what we're trying to do with our teaching staff. So, just, you know, we're out at job fairs, we're out recruiting, we're talking within our, all of our networks on the board and in our, on our staff, trying to reach out and recruit.
If you had more teachers of color, could you recruit from them rather than going to job fairs?
Yeah. I mean, tap into every avenue we can, definitely.
That'd be great. That'd be great. The breaks that you will redistribute over the year, so you'll have the same amount of days in school, but you'll redistribute the times they're off of school across the year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. How will those breaks affect parents and their jobs?
So, one of the things we're doing is working with the different community groups that we partner with to see what types of activities we can offer for our students. Camps that can be set up specifically for Quest students during that time, should parents need childcare during that time. We'll also be running some innovative programs at our school for parts of the fall and the spring break.
Great.
And our breaks will always mirror and encapsulate the district's breaks as well.
Thank you. Just a few more. I'm almost done. You had a slide on Quest student success over time, percent of students at or above grade level, NWEA. And we started with fifth grade and then three years. So, would that be eighth grade? Or how does that, how's that work?
Well, it's students who have been with us for three years. So, a student could come in at seventh grade. And so, it's all of our students who have been with us for three years are in that category.
Okay, so...
Typically, though, yes.
So, it might be...
Eighth grade is where we see, yes, so typically...
Well, because you're using, as your benchmark, fifth grade. So, I'm trying to make sense of how those steps work.
Right. So, we're just saying, when our students come to us, this is where they start, typically.
Okay. So, those three years, four years, five, are those the same students?
No. So, they're different groups of students. Those students who have been at Quest for three years is one category. At Quest for four years is the next bar graph.
Okay. So, these three, these kids have been there. It's not kids who've come in during that three-year time and they're part of that?
No.
Okay, good. Just a couple more. The ACTs were nineteen or so. And is that for the last, last year or the last two years?
Yes.
And your graduating class has been forties?
Thirty-nine last year.
Okay, thirty-nine and that year before forty.
Last year was the first year. This year is the second year.
So, that, that nineteen is for about forty students?
Mm-hmm.
And is that an average?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have a modal score? Average is a measure of central tendency that might be thrown off by highs and lows and so, may not give us the accurate picture of those forty, that's all. As compared to other schools, perhaps?
She has it. We have it. We have that data. We usually just present...
We used an average as compared to the other high schools, which were also...
Well, they have averages as well. That's true.
We were simply making a comparison.
And I guess last, your NWEA scores over time, where am I looking? Those was ACTs. Oh, and so, that's back to the success over time percentage of schools, students at or above grade level, NWEA. And yesterday, or was it today, that the Journal Star reported that according to the 2016 state, the state report card, seven percent of your students met or exceeded. How do you match those two numbers?
That's according to PARC.
Hmm?
Two different assessments. That's according to PARC.
Okay.
Which is a brand-new test.
Do those assessments not measure anything related to academic achievement?
Yes.
So, if they do measure something similar, there's a discrepancy either in validity or something going on with the difference in scores, no?
Well, I think if you would compare NWA scores from any school and PARC scores, you're going to see a drastic difference.
Okay.
Just, the test is completely set up different. It's very multi-step. It's a very different way of students testing and so, that is new to our students, certainly.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Yep.
Any other comments? Still...
Just, just a couple. I am a relatively new school board member. I do have a question. We've been raised a couple of times. When your class sizes are supposed to be seventy-five and you've had graduating classes that are significantly less than that, what happens? What happened to those students? And what happens if a student does drop during the year? How do you replace or do you replace?
Right. So, for our twelfth and eleventh grade, yes, they did start at seventy-five. And as in any school, you've got mobility. And so, over time, they may have started back in seventh grade and sixth grade, et cetera, at seventy-five. Over that many years, yes, we've lost students and we didn't add to those classes. At this point, though, we have a target enrollment of five hundred and ninety. How many we put in those grade levels is up to us. And so, we are taking more students at our middle school and our freshman academy because we know that over time, students do move. And so, we're trying to build it right.
There's also a culture issue. And the culture issue is that importing students in their junior and senior year to fill out a seventy-five student class doesn't do either the school or the student any benefits. So, we limit access to our upper-level classes because of that. However, to compensate, we've got higher numbers in our lower-level classes.
At the 365 breakfast, I sat with a couple of your folks who were, who were there at the breakfast and I, for one of the board members, are going to take you up on visiting Quest. There are some other questions I have and I just don't want to prolong this.
Yeah, please do.
Please do.
Please do.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Bates?
Um, again, I just want to say that that was a great presentation. I think it's very important for many of us that do have questions to follow the slide that you guys put together. And it just gives a good view of your school because there are many people that I'm sure still have questions. My question was, I believe if I heard you correctly, you guys will be implementing breaks in between your school years. Are the activities that will be presented, will the, will the students have the option to go to those activities during the breaks or will they be required to go to the activities?
So, it will be coming back from the breaks. We'll be doing Quest STEM camps. Those will be student attendance days, but they will be very different programming days with hands-on math, science, technology-type activities. So, very different than your traditional days. So, that's part of our strategic plan is to provide some more innovative programming. And then, like I said, during the breaks, setting up camps with area community groups as well for more opportunities for our students.
Thank you. I just have one thing I wanted to know. Did you mirror this concept after our Valeska Hinton Center?
You know, we started with Valeska in terms of some of the schools we interviewed and... and, you know, theirs is so clean, nine on, three off, nine on, three off, five-week summer. It's real simple. That was more challenging for us as we're trying to balance semesters, and it makes it really challenging in the fall. Our committee came to an agreement that we didn't want to start before August 1st. And so our breaks don't look clear-cut like that at all, but I think that they will be good breaks built in throughout. So come, come to the town hall, we'll talk in detail, we'll hand out the draft and answer a lot of questions.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, board members and parents and students for coming out tonight. I know you've been sitting here for a while, so we're going to give you, pause to give you a few minutes, and I know you're going to get up and leave.
Oh, feel free to stay.
So thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Dr. Willis. Okay. Busy outside. Thank you all.
Hey, Coach.
They were part of it for five years.
Maybe we'll get started.
Yeah, I will, okay. All right, next on our agenda, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda is the salary compensation structure. Dr. Karat and Dr. Ikujaku.
Thank you, President Ross. Dr. Ikujaku, I'm going to promise them that we're going to be very, very...
Very brief.
Very brief. Indulge me, please, in this transition. So we're transitioning to a new topic. Since I started in 2015, I have been poked around this topic from many different groups, our board, our staff, and, and, and again, as, as an employee growing up through the system, things made sense to me and, and I listened. So what I would like to do is, and I actually started this work when I first started, and I was happy when we hired Dr. Ikujaku, I, I just basically turned the notes over to him, and he took it to the next level. And so we just want to share with the board and the public for transparency, transparency purposes, a, an idea based on, well, the, the results of the research that we've conducted. And the poking was around the fact that the current compensation structure that we currently have, it, it's, here are some, here are some facts. If you turn to page two, it's based on our current teachers' schedules and teaching experience. Really, no credit is given for administrative experience. The responsibility, responsibility factor, which, which is associated with it, for administrators, apply, it's applied really after the fact and so forth. And you have that in front of you. Another, another thing about our current administrative compensation structure is that there continue to be ongoing concerns by administrators, and concerns are also expressed by a group of administrators on behalf of all administrators. When I came on board, a group of administrators met with me. When Dr. Ikujaku came on board, I kind of rerouted them to him, and I think actually they went on their own and had a conversation with him. So based on this current structure, we're saying that there, there are structural flaws, and here's some lack of clarity. Again, I mentioned the concerns expressed by administrators, the no credit given for administrative experience. There is, again, a direct link to...
Sorry, we have some technical difficulties.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
It signed up at nine o'clock.
You have your information, you may want to refer to your, your, your copy. And...
Yeah, the computer shut up at nine o'clock, so...
This is, this is a, 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 no, it's, it's, it's an energy savings. It's intent, it's intentional, unless if you tell the system ahead of time, "Don't shut off at nine," and I, I didn't, yes.
Maybe the system's suggesting we should have shorter board agendas.
I don't know what happened, this agenda just grew.
I think it's going very well out here.
Yeah, this agenda just grew, I'm sorry, board. Okay, so we talked about the background, we talked about the flaws. I'm going to ask Dr. Ikujaku to basically take it to the next level in terms of the information.
Yeah.
Quickly, Doc.
Thank you very much. And basically, we looked at a few options. One of the options is to do nothing, basically start a school. And we know that based on what Dr. Karat has shared with you, that nobody's happy with the current system, and we do know that, you know, it's got all kinds of issues with it. So we're not, we're not recommending doing nothing, which is status quo. Instead, what, what we've done is take a look at various other schedules out there for administrators and developed a fifteen-lane schedule. Basically, a schedule that has all the administrative categories, principals, elementary principals, middle, high, APs, et cetera. And then to the right of it would be the lanes, just like the teacher's schedule has. You can, I guess, build a shorter lane, but we know that when you build a shorter lane, people top out fast, and then, you know, they come knocking at your door, "What are you going to do with me next?" And so each category, whether it's elementary, middle, and high, in terms of principalships, is differentiated or demarcated by a ten percent increase to kind of reflect the difficulty, the level of difficulty as you grow up. Now, as you know, there is an alternative education category there. We have our Knoxville's of the world that, and all the specialty schools, that you must take into consideration when you're designing compensation schedules. Typically, alternative education principals or schools are treated like middle schools because they're not elementary, and they're not high school either. So most folks, or most districts, tend to use the middle school, place them at the middle school, but then take into consideration any unique situations or circumstances about them. Let's see, where are we now? Yeah, move forward, let's see. See if we can catch up. All right, okay, very good, very quickly. Yeah. What you're looking at there is a profile of our current administrators, but this will relate to something else that I'll, that I'll speak about momentarily. But in terms of the schedules, the schedules, the fifteen-lane schedule, yeah, keep going, keep going, yeah. Okay, keep on going as well, because this is all background as well. You may or may not remember about a study that was done by Mr. Demmon, who came and looked at, looked at the LUDAS studies, you know, Large Unit District Association? They, they studied salaries all the time, and they looked at the fourteen, fifteen salaries, salaries of, of seven school districts. And based on that study, that researcher was able to identify that Peoria is at the very bottom, really, of, of the salaries for Peoria school administrators. And of course, he said that this could pose great challenges in recruiting the best candidates to come here, and then urge that we review salaries every year, but as part of that is, is building a whole new schedule, just so that we can be decoupled from the teacher's, teacher's system. Next. Take a look at what he found in terms of where Peoria falls. This is the elementary, with the elementary group. Blue Mountain, of course, is on top. The average salary there is one hundred and thirteen thousand, and of course, Peoria is seventh, that's seventy-three. AP, same thing, sixty-three. Not too many school districts have APs at the elementary level, so therefore, that's why you have those non-applicable ones over there. Next. Take another look at the middle school group. Again, we have seventh, both in terms of principalship and assistant principalships. And finally, the high school group, also seventh, which Champaign leading the high school, one hundred and thirty-nine, and we had one oh five. AP, Springfield is up there, Springfield and Rockford, and Peoria again. So in all categories, we're at the bottom. See the superintendent sends it? Move forward, move forward. Obviously, the implication is clear, we need to do something real fast. And so the options at the end, we talked about here, they are, and the first one is start a school, it's a fifteen-lane option, and then there's also a third option that we're not recommending, which is basically placing people by salary range. It's, it's used in some places, but doesn't quite work very well. Of course, okay, this is the reason why the option is not, because of structural flaws, et cetera? All right, let me just talk a little bit about the fifteen-lane, fifteen-lane schedule. Basically, it, 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 you establish it away from, from, from the teachers. Administrative will top out at the fifteenth lane and then grow either by annual increases, bonuses, or any combination as, as may be determined by administration and, and the board. And of course, it differentiates the, the, the structure by, by those levels. Next. Okay. I talked about this already, ten percent gap between elementary, middle, and high. The APs are, of course, below the starting salary for, will be below the starting salary for elementary schools, with high school APs earning at least about one percent below, and then AP of middle schools earning three percent below. The amounts, the amount of money between lanes in the proposed structure, let's see, could be modified. I mean, you can, in time, you can modify that based on what, what's going on in the, in the market. And there's flexibility in placing people on the schedule. Right now, as we talked about, there is no credit, initial credit, when somebody's coming in with administrative experience. Rather, they are placed based on the teacher's salary schedule, which, by the way, when you do that, you are making the teacher's bargaining unit a surrogate bargaining unit for the administrators, when in fact, they should be independent and functioning by themselves. And as I also said, you can modify, but when, if you modify it by cutting it short, the result, there's a grandfathering that you must do so that people don't lose money. Let's see, option two, still continues, basically, options for how those who top out can be kept happy, essentially. And you can do that with one-time, one-time pay increases or flat bonuses. Basically, what we're proposing is going to be something that anybody who comes into the organization from within or from, from, from the outside should be able to follow the guidelines and say, "Yep, this is where I'm going to fall," with or without flexibility from the superintendent or designee. You can skip this one, this is that third option that has salary ranges that we don't want. So recommendations, we say to basically decouple it from the teacher's schedule and implement that fifteen-lane schedule. Chris, move forward. The difference in salary amounts between lanes can average anywhere from three to five percent across columns, but we are proposing two percent, like we said there, out of sheer fiscal prudence. Obviously, we're looking at next school year for implementation. If things change between now and then, it would still be, it can be tinkered with. Ms. Eman is helping to run the figures as we're working this. So I talked to her this morning, and said, "We've tweaked a few more things on there, and so we're going to need you to do yet another, another set of analysis on that." Right now, administrators, like teachers, get academic credit, but, you know, they get academic advancement when they, when they go to school to, when they acquire additional credits. We, once you adjust this upward so that the starting salary is higher, that will no longer be necessary. And...
You'll get a thousand for the, for the doctorate.
For the doctorate, correct, yeah. The only, the only, yes, exactly. So no more educational increment given, except for the doctorate, which is typical for all, for most school districts. And one more, let me just speak to that real quickly. Grant administrators who top out the salary schedule, or the salary schedule, a modest stipend a year. Yeah, I've already addressed this one. So basically, the superintendent or designee would have discretion in terms of, if it's a hard-to-staff school, if it's an area that you, the board, and the superintendent determine needs to be, you need to entice somebody to come to, that discretion should still be there. That was the fastest I've ever gone in terms of presentation. We'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions with Dr. Ikujaku? We all have all the package.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but reviewing the, the salary thing that we have, what it appeared to me, and I'm glad you're doing something about it, is that it looked to me, as I look at issues from the HR perspective, it appears that people were not given salaries based on experience, the ability to do job, but who you were...
Yes.
By person. I am glad that we're going to get by that.
Yes.
Because there's some real discrepancies as to what people make doing almost the same thing. And so if we're going to get past that, that's why I'd like to see that we don't give people salary based on who you are.
Correct.
Based on the job classification and what you do. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. That's exactly what Dr. Karat started with initially, saying that people came to her, and then when I came to something, they bombarded me, say, "I don't know what I should be making or shouldn't be making," and, and then they try to compare what they're making to what others are making who are in the same type of work, and it's just not making sense. So things kind of got away from us at some point, and so this is a, a chance to corral it and make it all flow and make sense.
So just from a process standpoint, you'll continue to run the numbers and kind of finalize the recommendation and then bring an action item back to us?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments for Dr. Ikujaku or Dr. Karat? Comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Proposed expenditures under, over $2,500. Any questions on any of those? Mr. Willis, you have any comments on anything? Thank you. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such report.
Since our last board meeting on January ninth, we received one Freedom of Information Act, this request is pending. There were two pending requests noted on, on January ninth, one was filled. We have received six requests for this calendar year, and a total run-in balance...
We have received six requests for this calendar year and our total running balance is $4,597.50.
Thank you. Action items, consent agenda.
President Ross, the consent agenda consists of the following items this evening. Item number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, $14,827. Year-to-date, $177,013.13. Item two, payment for bills. Item three, payment for travel. Item four, human resources report. Item five, approval of the settlement agreement with Joseph Douglas. Item six, speech therapist consulting agreement. Item seven, broadcast of board meetings on Comcast Channel 22 and ITV3, Channel 11. Item number eight, a memorandum of understanding with Local Number 780, FY17, Joint RIF Committee. And item number nine, the meeting dates for the Board of Education for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Okay. Are there any items any board member would like to pull for a separate vote or, well, for a separate vote, because you can't have discussion on it? Any items at all? Mr. Adler, did you get your question answered about the calendar?
Dr. Karat, do we
We can actually, let's get
Let's move the whole thing first. I move that we adopt the entirety of the consent agenda.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. Now, discussion, go ahead.
Dr. Karat, did we get any answer on that kind of outlier with November on the board meeting dates? Do you have any idea why we have that?
I guess that's a question for Ms. Ross and Daphne. I'm not in charge of putting the agenda together, I was handing it
Well, that's a calendar, we don't do the calendar. That's, calendar is done by the administration.
Which date is it?
It's, so normally, we're on the second and fourth weeks of the months. November just happens to be first and third.
For board meeting dates.
There's a calendar committee.
Yeah, for board meeting dates.
Yeah.
So you're referring to board meeting dates?
Yes, board meeting dates.
Yeah. Yeah, the calendar committee is not in charge of determining the board meeting dates.
No, we, I mean, we don't normally discuss that, it's just that way it is every year. It's either the Monday, the Monday before or the Monday right after.
So I suspect it was past practice, but we can
It's not terribly impactful, I was just curious.
So what we can do, we can bring it back if you like, because it's really not anything that we have to do right today.
Yeah.
Okay, so does somebody want to table that one? Okay. Okay.
Does any board member have a problem with going second and fourth on November?
Just a quick question. You said that we were accommodating holidays?
Yes.
How does that mesh with, I mean, Thanksgiving's the only thing I'm thinking about.
Yeah, so Thanksgiving being on a Thursday, it's, you know, us being on a Monday, I guess my feeling is we accommodate the holiday either way.
Okay.
I may be cleaning up spilled gravy that night, but okay.
And it doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
As a minute.
As a minute, okay. So are we all great on that? All right, well, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Yep.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. Expulsions, deliberation items, rather.
President Ross, there are two items on the deliberation agenda. Item 10, expulsions. I move that the expulsions listed on the report dated January 23rd, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item number 11, expulsion with expulsion to be held in advance. I move that the expulsion with the expulsion held in advance, listed on the report dated January 23rd, 2017, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members, are there any?
Just one.
Mr. Walter?
I would ask, Mr. Willis, I had an asterisk on Mr. Copeland's salary increase, that he'd be frozen, but now that we have passed the memorandum on the broadcast of the Comcast one, I ask that that asterisk be removed.
So noted.
Too late.
Reports from board committees.
I just want to give the date of the next policy committee meeting, that will be November, February 15th. I'm stuck in November now.
Oh, no, not on my birthday.
February 15th at 9:30 a.m.
That's Mrs. Ross's birthday.
Can't have a meeting on my birthday, it's a holiday. Any other board, board committee reports?
Buildings Committee is looking, still targeting next week for the next building committee meeting, either Monday or Tuesday.
Others?
President Ross, I move that we adjourn.
All right, thank you.